You're going to begin our workshop, which is our initial draft of the 2025 budget. Mona, will you be? Mona, will you be back there or will you be coming up forward?
That's fine.
Is it okay to start? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for coming to the study sessions. I'm going to share the presentation in a bit. I provided you hard copies also in case you would like to take any notes. So the first slide is actually just a refresher on how the sales tax revenue is being calculated and how it's being split amongst different funds and also try view based on the IGA we have with them. In terms of the 2025 budget, we did keep the amount flat to 2023 actuals. Unfortunately, we don't have a trend we could apply. Can you all hear me okay? Oh. Oh, because of the monitor. Glad you can see me. Yes. So in terms of 2025 budget, we kept the the sales tax for general fund at 2023 levels. So it's going to be around 5.9 million. The reason we have not applied the trend we have seen so far is because the trend has been all over the place. January year over year has been very high. And then it kind of dropped and last month we actually see a decrease over prior year. So we would like to to see a few more months and we can adjust this trend going forward. But everything else that's on the slide is just explaining how this sales tax is being distributed or allocated to different funds to F to A water fund, the tri view and also general fund. In terms of, so that's the largest piece of revenue sales tax. Also a reminder, the last quarter of 2024, we will be self collect. So it will be interesting to see if we're gonna have an increase in the amount of sales tax we're gonna collect once we start being self collect. In terms of expenses, the approach for the budget, it's still the same has been in 2023, 2024. So each department will provide us with their needs to run the department. However, there are some assumptions we would like to go over with you. And if you don't agree with something, we use as an assumption, please let us know so we can make the proper changes. I noted the big assumptions in the budget at the moment. So for health insurance, we have a 9% increase year over year. This data is now going to be available until September. Dental insurance, 2% increase year over year. For SERSA property and casualty premium, we are considering a 15% increase. We don't have an indication where it's gonna end up. We should receive by the end of July, beginning of August, something from SERSA, which will then we can populate the budget with real numbers and not just an estimate. In terms of salary, we are proposing a 3% COLA and 2% merit increase. And again, for a total of five, if somebody qualifies for the entire 2% merit increase. And then meal levy, we are not proposing to change anything, keep it at 5.0 meals. Do you have any, any questions or would you like to make any comments so far?
When, when the COLA will be adjusted though, right? I mean, we're going to look to see what the feds put out as far as COLA goes.
Yes, or when we're gonna have the number. So the number will not be available till December. Actually, it's the social security who picked up the COLA. But we can send a survey to the other municipalities, just like I did last year to see what they are planning to have in the 2025 budget.
Okay. And is that, is that SERSA increases, is that an anomaly or is it typically 15% a year?
We usually go with, I'm sorry about that. The, the, the PNC industry almost on a nationwide basis is expecting, whether you did anything or not, like a 22% increase in auto insurance premiums period across the board. So it's a national epidemic of hail, this, that, and everything else under God's green earth that is happening in the property and casualty industry. It's not just SERSA. I'll let her finish the rest now. Yeah.
Wanted to see if this, this is typically what we expect every year or this is typical or just to this year.
We usually go with a 10% increase. But this year specifically because of the, just like council member Romanello mentioned, because we had a lot of claims in Colorado for hail and other claims wildfires and whatnot. SERSA, when they came in person to visit Mike, they mentioned it's going to be a significant increase this year. We just don't know, they couldn't provide us with a percent increase. So we're going higher. And this is just an estimate. Once we receive the numbers, we will know exactly how much it's gonna be and we still have time to adjust.
Sure.
The budget.
When, um, thank you, Mona. I'd like to piggyback when those numbers come in. I would like to get some form of letter from SERSA as to the areas that are going up and the reasons why. There's the, the property stuff I get, but the rest of it, I want to know if our, our quarterly premiums are going up due to other reasons.
Yes, we can ask. And also what we're planning on doing for this year, we ask before we used to go with a 5,000 deductible per claim. Now for properties, we ask them to provide us with also a $10,000 deductible per claim to see if it's gonna bring down the premium. So they're gonna send us two different scenarios and we can go with which one we think it's more appropriate.
Thank you.
I have just a curiosity question. If in accordance with what Mr. Romanello said, would it be prudent of us to make that 15% 20?
Yes.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, for sure. Since we don't have an indication how high it's gonna be, 20% seems just as good as another percent. We, we really don't know. But we can make this change in the budget if you like. Is that something you would all like to have?
I'd like to see how compared, when, what our reserves looks like before we start adding and subtracting numbers. Cause you have reserves set for 15% already.
That's what GFOA is asking us 16% to have a reserve. It's not like we need to be there, but that's the recommendation. Any more questions on this page or? Okay. We wanted to give you also a list of projects that are currently included in the, in the budget. So these are just general fund projects, expenses, and I'll give you a second to, to read.
It's by no means an exhaustive list. It's just some examples of some sort of out of the ordinary expenses.
And also larger expenses.
The comp plan is already funded half.
Yes, we do have a grant for 200,000, so net will be 250.
So wouldn't we reflect the true part of our budget?
In the budget, it is reflected.
These are what our projects are gonna cost.
These are just expenses, how the project is gonna, how much is in the budget under expenses. But you are right, Mr. Mayor, in the revenue, we do have the 200. So overall, it's gonna be a net of 250. And also, actually, no. Yes, so you are right, overall, it's gonna be a 250. Or unless there is a different estimate, this is an estimate we had from 2024 budget.
Are we anticipating that in the the last year that those costs have gone up to conduct a comp plan?
A comp plan.
I think, I think what you're doing is that there's potentially additional funding that we're, we're seeking right now to add to the, to the funding that we have now, both we bring into our own budget. So there will change the value of overall value of the project. And in anticipation, we want to put more, I consider it a comprehensive plan study. So I, I, our funding is fine the way it is right now. I'm not worried about that. But we are looking for additional funding sources that will build upon it. So we can do more studying with the parks recreation, stormwater and stuff. They answered that question okay?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, is that this really, this comp plan really started in 2023 or 2024. And this is now pushing into 2025's budget, which says to me that we're not going to begin the comp plan in 2024. Because we're seeking additional funding and adding additional components to the comp plan. And because we budgeted the 200 and plus thousand dollars in 2023. And I, I remember it was May 31st of last year of 2023 that we actually received the match, the award. So when in 20, if we're not going to do it in 2024, what month are we going to do it in 2025?
Meryl, kind, we're, I, we're not doing, we're not delaying anything with the, the comprehensive plan. We're still moving forward. Okay, I was just, I, she was hesitant and explaining where the, how the dollars came up. And I, I thought you were just referring to the additional dollars that we're trying to bring in. That's something that I brought up a couple of months ago. But we are not delaying it. It's still a project that I hope to have out before the end of the year. And it's still an 18 to 24 month project. $400,000 is originally conceived is actually still a good amount of money. But we'd like to be able to do more with the comp plan, given the, the, the challenges that are, that are, that are ahead of us as a community with parks, stormwater management, transportation issues, emergency issues and so on. So we want to be able to bundle as much into that plan as possible. And to do so, we, we're gonna, we're gonna try to bring in some partners with additional funds. But we, the intention right now is to still move forward as we discussed earlier.
Okay.
Well, could you please check the, am I doing this or I'm showing all the participants? Cause I'm seeing, okay, good. Any more questions on the projects? And these are just the big projects. There are some smaller ones. If you'd like to see any additional details, just let us know. So Mayor La Kind, you mentioned the reserves. Here is some a breakdown of the reserve. Some funds are restricted funds such as ARPA funds of 2 million. We as a team discuss, but we need your guidance to utilize perhaps these funds into, for the Jackson Creek Parkway Stormwater Project or maybe for other stormwater projects around town. We also have to keep a table reserve, which is 3%. And depending on where the expenses are, the 3% will be moving with that. And then we just, if you remember, we received the final audited numbers for 2023. So with those numbers, we, our reserve is about 3 million or 30%. And this is after the table and after the 2 million ARPA funds.
Is there a breakdown of the cost for the Jackson Creek Parkway Stormwater? As compared to the number of projects or total amount for the other stormwater projects around town?
Jeremiah is working with one of our consulting company. I'm not sure if he has any numbers he can speak of.
No, I, we had a meeting this morning with the design firm for Jackson Creek Parkway, F H U. And initially, what the idea was for the stormwater on Jackson Creek Parkway was a little bit complicated because if you try to build all that separated out from the larger construction, it gets kind of complicated because you know, they're intertwined. But what we're talking about now that we just kind of started mulling over today as it relates to the ARPA money is to look at the detention down at the, at the Higbee area and get that built. And, and run as much 72 inch pipe as we can to the north. We would stop just shy of Higbee Road. But at least that component of it would be built, which thereby would lessen the, I guess, the, the funding gap that we're going to run into for the larger project along Jackson Creek Parkway. So we're still trying to leverage the ARPA money to contribute to that project. It's just anything north of Higbee Road, it's very complicated. Because you really can't build one without the other, so to speak. And so trying to find a contractor to award the larger project to and say, well, wait a minute. We want to break out just the stormwater for the ARPA money. It just gets very complicated. So there are some other opportunities throughout the town to make some other improvements. And we're going to kind of hash the rest of that out tomorrow, hopefully, and, and flush some of those projects out and make sure that we spend our money. So any questions?
The only caveat with the ARPA funds, we need to have contracts by the end of this year in order to utilize these funds next year. Because legal expenses have been a question always. We wanted to give you a breakdown into what's in the budget for legal expenses. And this breakdown, it's detailed. So you see how much is in general fund, PD, water fund, and also in general fund in what accounts and what amounts and also comparison, year over year comparison. So overall, we're gonna be 35,000 over in general fund over 2024. And for the town, we're gonna be 65,000 over 2024.
What are these technical services?
It's the name of the technical and professional services. It's something council member Crani has asked last year.
It's a software term, not necessarily the name.
It's just the budget category that incorporates legal.
To be honest, it can be one account. Professional services is something when we don't have the expertise or technical services, when we don't have the expertise in town. So these are for the company we hire to provide us legal services.
Yeah. Where are we so far year to date with legal expenses now this year?
So year to date, we are around 160,000.
Okay.
And I don't know if we receive all the invoices so far, but the last invoice we received was seven eight. Moving on to the next slide, these are the supplemental projects. So none of these projects are in the budget for, and again, we need your expertise. I don't know what, what you would like to focus our attention in 2025. If it's the Jackson Creek Parkway, if it's the public work building, those are the big numbers and these are just estimates. We don't know if it's gonna be a 9 million next year or 10 million for public worth building. Or if you have an appetite to even allow any of these projects to be in the budget. Also, the first two projects for the clerk department, we have them in the budget in 2024. But in case they don't, if we don't acquire a software or if we're not gonna be able to implement this software, they will move to 2025 if you approve. So.
What's? We, we just hired a records person, did we not?
We did.
So do we not have the software that the records person would be utilizing?
Um, we do not currently have records management software. What our records managers in the process of doing is doing a complete records inventory and writing a records management plan to help us implement the software that we select. It is all on track to be completed by this year, but I didn't want to, just wanted to make sure that in the event that the RFP process doesn't go as smoothly as we anticipate or if vendors are not able to meet our needs, that we would be able to successfully implement the project in 2025.
Okay, but we, the 35,000 was budgeted for 2024.
It was, and we have barely tapped into that at all. And more than likely, we won't need a consultant. The consultant was brought on before we hired the records manager. And we intended that the consultant would work with the records manager side by side for a longer period than, than what actually happened. Because Kat, when she got here, felt that she didn't need the assistance of a consultant. I thought it would be prudent though, to keep that in there in case when we implement our software, we need training townwide or if there's any assistance that we need, you know, implementing the software that we would have that funded.
Okay, thank you.
Also, in terms of finance department, we would like to request the software. If it's possible to utilize it for budget. Again, none of these are in the budget. So it's up to the town council to approve or not any of these requests. And then the other projects, it's the camera system for IT department.
What, what are we using for budgeting today?
Or the software, we use an Excel spreadsheet with about 70 tabs.
That sounds like fun.
It is.
That was, was that a 2024 or is this a new?
This is a new ask.
New ask and, and you, you all decided that you've had enough of 70 tabs of Excel.
Well, we figure we should ask you if.
Well, that's a reasonable ask.
Right, totally, because I don't.
Labor standards on that, I mean.
Sent me a 70 tab spreadsheet.
And I love Excel, but Excel is not exactly the most stable, especially when you start talking cutting and pasting and 70 tabs, so from experience.
Careful of it.
And we do have formulas, but still it's not, it's not easy to roll over from one ear to the other.
That's ridiculous.
That takes so much time of our staff just to enter it. I mean, we're paying.
I just wanted. What we were using.
I'm not, I'm emphasizing not arguing. Okay, there's a difference emphasizing, not arguing.
For the Jackson Creek Parkway expenses, is that where it sits currently per the plan? Or what, what's, where, where, where are we on, on that cost?
I had a better answer for you, but I really don't. And I just want to be honest about that. Right now, we're trying to work towards 90% rendering so that we can actually go to market and see what these numbers are really going to be. Based on some assessment that our consultant has done using C dot numbers, those sorts of things. We feel like it's probably in that ballpark. But again, there is some difference in terms of what's kind of going on with Jackson Creek Parkway. One is that a lot of it is grant funding. That brings a different element to the way that that project is managed, does it need to be Davis Bacon or not? Because it is a federalized project because of the grant money. So it just, it brings a little bit different of a skew to it. And, and we all know inflation and all these things with, you know, what's going on. So I think for us to get real numbers, we really are just gonna have to go to bid and figure out what is it going to cost. And unfortunately, I just don't have.
You can't go to bid until it hits 90, right?
Correct.
And what percent are we at now?
We're very close to 90. We're at a 30%, but what needs to happen is it needs to go to C dot for environmental review and all of these other components. There's some right away acquisitions that need to happen. We just got done with our underground utility, you know, engineering to make sure that there's no major conflicts there that would alter the design, the conceptual design. So the goal has been, I think, you know, at least since I've been here to get to a place in, in the August, September to have a plan set ready to potentially go to market. But as we know, it's just sometimes with the review process with C dot, things kind of get delayed. And I, I feel like we may still be there, but here's what I do know. We don't have the money to build it. And so we're going to have to figure out leveraging either more grant money or looking at other financing options in terms of bonding or whatever may need to, to fill the void, that, the funding void. So I wish I could give you some better ideas of what those numbers look like. C dot, from my understanding with the last meeting that we had with our design consultant, has some more up to date C dot numbers that we're going to start applying to what units we know in terms of the construction of, of the work. So that should be able to give us a more rounded estimate of what the project will cost. But it's out there. It's, we're in that ballpark. I mean, it's a simple median between, you know, nine and 11.
Would it be a good idea? This is kind of the same question that I asked, Mona. Would it be a more realistic and better idea to make that number on the high side? And the reason I ask is it's three times what it was initially. And all I see is everything going up, 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 up. So maybe this is low.
Yeah.
Is kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I feel we, we can certainly do that. I mean, and you know, until we have real numbers, that there's just numbers at this point, right? And I think how I'm feeling about the project is that I know that we don't have money to build it, like we don't have the 9 million now. So is there some potential opportunity to seek out additional grant money? That's a, that's a real possibility. And that's something that would be probably, you know, more realistic to look into for next year, but.
But then the price goes up if we keep waiting.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And this, this has been going on since 2020. So what have we been putting away for impact fees to go towards impact? Right, how much? Well, how much money do we have in our account that's been impact fees?
300,000.
300,000?
So.
I think it's 350 last time.
And, and that's, I, I want to say that I, I share some of that that thought on that. And that's, I want to say that I share some of that, that thought on that topic. There have been some things that have, you know, that have been negotiated throughout this process. And part of that was you have the classic homes to the north end and at the intersection of 105. And they didn't want to co-mingle that component of the work, from my understanding, so that that portion wouldn't be federalized, holding up the improvements at 105. I'm not here to judge if that was a good decision or not, but there was some negotiations there. So, you know, I think as it stands, you know, what would have normally been potentially collected for the impact fees on there were negotiated at, you know, the Alan Bybee scale. I didn't make those deals, but.
Right, but we are supposed to be getting a million from El Paso County in exchange for the intersection. So do you have a timeline on when that's supposed to come along?
So I can speak to that a little bit. So the county is contributing a million dollars towards the intersection improvement and classic homes is kind of filling some of the gap and they're self-performing the work. That's where a lot of the IGA component came into play for that whole intersection, which held up the access permit for classic homes to start that work. We are very close to getting that IGA. We're going to be presenting that to the council to sign. I've vetted it. I've, you know, I want to take some ownership of the fact that I have held up that IGA because I didn't feel like it was a fair deal for the town to be taking on a permanent facility.
But, but the million dollars is going towards the construction?
The, or the intersection, the light itself.
That is not, that is not how I believe it was presented to us. It was a million dollars in exchange for us taking on the, and annexing and owning that intersection in the future, not contributing towards the construction of it. So you're saying now that the million dollars is going to go towards the development and it's now going to be shared with, with.
We will own and have control over.
Yeah, but we won't have a million dollars.
The million dollars is going to go towards the, the building of the.
That's not how it was presented.
So.
So when we get the IGA, be prepared for, for pushback if we need to schedule meetings with Brett Waters and his team. Because that intersection was supposed to be done by classic homes. That was their project. Not a joint effort where a million dollars, which we didn't have to begin with, was going to contribute towards the construction of that intersection.
Correct. So their, their contribution is helping build that section.
Do you have any, do you have any idea dollar wise, what they've done as far as their improvements? And I don't really want to throw the temporary stuff in there that has to come out. Do, do you have a, I mean, I know it's, I know it's a wag, but.
Which, which they, classic or?
Right.
You know, I would need to think on that.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. I understand. And I do feel again, kind of past that. And I think we need to start figuring out, my position is I do want to come back to the county and start requesting more money to be contributed to the stormwater component of this company. Because we have historically taken on a lot of inflow from the county. And now we're putting in real infrastructure. What I mean is no longer ditches, we're putting in real, you know, subsurface infrastructure. And I feel like they need to contribute that. And so those are conversations that need to be had, but that adds to the complexity of this project. And, and again, I wish I could give them better answers today and say I knew, you know, a definitive answer on what it would cost, but I just, I don't.
It's a lot to bid something out and then not be able to do it.
That's the other side.
Right. I want to pull back on the stick a little bit. So the, the budget says nine-ish, probably 11, probably 13 by the time we get there. So in terms of budgeting and then funding, at some point, we have to put it into the budget in order to get it funded. So where are we on the funding? And how close are we to put it on, on the budget to where we can actually fund, start funding the project? Cause it, this, I mentioned this is going to be a multi-year project. Between the stormwater, the, the, was it the three, the two intersections and et cetera? And well, there's going to be intersections added to it. I'm assuming it's going to be a multi-year project, at least 18 months, if not two, two to three years. Where, where are we in the funding versus?
There's no funding.
Well, we, we have grants and, and other, and other funds from federal resources, right?
Answer that question. I'm going to try and answer it through the best of my ability. I don't feel like the project is overly, it's not a three-year project. It's only a three-year project because we're, we're scrounging for money.
Okay.
I'm looking at some alternatives and I've been, you know, Dan and I were just discussing this, you know, earlier before the meeting about potentially looking at, well, how much more development is going? I mean, there's only so much more land along that corridor that we can collect impact money. But my concern with the road as it is now, you've got classic to the north. It's done their widening for capacity. And then you have what's been done south of it. Well, if development's not going to be happening on either side of the road, I feel like we could probably build the road to meet the capacity, meaning to widen the road and not necessarily put in the other infrastructures such as the multimodal, the sidewalks, even potentially the drainage. And then as the development comes along the way in there, start addressing the impact fees that way to start implementing that. Yes, it's not, is it the most ideal? No, but what are we left with if we don't do that? We've got a bottleneck to the, you know, from the north and from the south and.
I personally don't like that option about not having sidewalks with the amount of school right there.
Yeah.
YMCA right across the street, the, the volume of kids that are transiting back and forth with, we're going to widen the road. And I see it during the school year and during the summertime that they're walk, they're already walking in those ditches on both sides. So it's, it's just not safe.
No, and it's certainly not. I want, I want to be, you know, clear about that. It's not ideal, but from a traffic, I mean, it is a road to convey traffic. And there may be some opportunity to look at that particular corner and maybe we can do something to the Y, but we just got to start looking at options. If, if the funding gap is going to be so large, you know, without seeking out either bonding or some other way to pay for it. I mean, it is going to be a big lift.
What, what's the amount of grant money that we're in receipt of today for this? For our, this is our share, right?
So our share is fairly minimal. I want to say it's like a hundred and some thousand dollars. And, and don't, I, I need to look at those numbers again to give you, but it's very minimal. But it's really dedicated to the design. It has really not much to do with any of the construction. So it's, it's to be able to get to that place of constructability. And so that's kind of where we're at.
And so you lose that grant money if it's not used by a certain date?
I think that we will utilize the money. That is the pressure that I put on some consulting firm is to get me designed. And even if I have to put it on the shelf and we have to tweak it a little bit down the road, but we have to have design by the end of this year and they're committed to do.
What about going to the county? I mean, it is, the school is in their, in their area. They did impact the area by putting a school there. And I know there was no impact fees probably given to the town. What is it? 50 years ago, Lewis Palmer was put up? But, but now we need money to expand those roads. We got the developer doing Higbee and, you know, Tribeview doing Higbee. And now where you need to do Jackson Creek, is there anything that we can go back to the county on and say, hey, we're doing this for the safety of the students in your jurisdiction. You need to contribute because you didn't do it 50 years ago.
I'm not, I'm not the guy to answer that one.
There's an RTA along there, right?
But I do feel they wanted to do in the future, any kind of improvement, that would certainly be the opportunity to have that, that.
Yeah, we could ask about RTA funds.
You know, I, I would look to finding, I don't know.
Dan doesn't look positive.
We can ask about RTA.
Dan's buying lottery tickets.
Yeah.
Think another option, and, and I get where you're, where you're coming from. I, I understand. The, the ideal is you do it one, one fell swoop, you do everything, it looks gorgeous, it's done. And, and the, the angels are singing, but we're not, we're, we're, I don't know that we're ever going to get there. So I, I see where you're coming from. It's not ideal, but it, it gets rid of that bottleneck that we have right now, and it's only going to get worse. I don't know if this is an ugly option, because they're all, they're all ugly babies. But what about doing it in, in chunks? So Higbee to the, to the Y, I sent that, that short intersection, do that first.
Higbee to the Y is on a long, we, we can get developer contribution on that because that's CSI, north of Higbee, south of the Y. So they're going to build there eventually, so they're going to have to contribute.
Yeah.
To, to that. So it won't be completely on the town. And I'm sure there will be that. And then there's the section north of the Y, that's also theirs.
Yeah.
On the west side.
But it, but in terms of options of, of, yeah, we have, we have the design and then we do it in chunks to where we can say, we're going to do this chunk. You know, who, whichever developer is going to develop this, this, this portion or on the west or east, pony up some, some money to do this chunk. Again, not ideal, not how you want to expand roads, but it's an option.
Viable things to look at for sure. My concern with it is, is that you don't really control the pace of the development.
Correct.
And so, and that can change from what maybe is proposed today to what's proposed tomorrow. That could ultimately change the impact fees that are collected as a result. The capacity of the road is my biggest concern. That's really just as a road guy, right? Like at some point, you've got a, you've got a bottleneck and then, and then it opens back up once you get closer to 105 and that creates congestion. And then that starts leading to bigger safety concerns in terms of traffic related incidents. So for me, I feel like building the capacity of the road. Again, it's not ideal, but it's a way to kind of deal with the bottleneck. And frankly, the community is probably not very happy right now. Like, what's the town doing in terms of everything else is built to the south and to the north of it? And, and we're holding the bag with, with the section that's not being built. So I'd rather see width of the road go and, and then deal with the other infrastructure that comes along with it. And that's, that's a way to kind of finance it essentially is through delay, but at least you're not delaying all of it.
I have a question. You mentioned earlier the funding gap. Is that due to our low impact fees that we've had for years and years and years? Well, why do we have a funding gap?
Yeah. It's, 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 well, if I can say, you know, it's bigger than that. It, it, it's just really just poor planning. I, I mean, I, listen, I was on this board, you know, I'm.
Exactly.
When I, when, when, when Don Wilson was mayor, I remember that specifically. I remember looking at staff and going, look, as a resident who drives here all the time, because I live here, right? I go, we're going to look like idiots. I go, this has got to get handled because exactly what you're saying right now. We said, and nothing moved, I mean, did we move forward? We get a couple of things done, yeah. But there's never been a real plan for that, ever.
Why, you guys were on the council and I'm going to bring it up. I'm going to bring up the elephant in the room. You guys were all up here and heard this, that you did nothing about the low impact fees. We were going to, nine million dollars.
I don't think, I don't think it would have made up nine million dollars in five years. I think it was planning way, way before that. And we all have our strengths here, right? I mean.
Enough, but I'm saying we still have to dump nine million dollars of town money into roads and that because of development from developers that we didn't make.
I think all of it is attributed necessarily to the impact fees mentioned. I mean, it certainly is a factor, but let's be honest, we've seen some of the largest inflation in history, right? Like at, at this point, when you're talking about construction materials, all of those things that, that feed into the current cost of things today.
Yeah, if you want to look back, and I don't know how to do this again, this is not my strength. I have different strength. We all, the beauty about this right now is we all, all seven of us carry a different talent set. And it's a beautiful thing. But I think that if we went back to any project in the last six years, unless you were to go like 5,000% more, you don't even come make a dent in this, okay? And what happened in the last six years, for example, I just think it goes back further than that and longer than that. And I don't know the answers to it. And, and it's done. I mean, you know, you can't go back and come in early. You're, you're late. So, you know, what do we do from here is more important? And we just got to, I think, we, I think everyone here feels and understands the urgency that you're communicating, that we'd all like to see this done. And it's just going to be like anything else. Everyone agrees on the problem. And then there's several different arguments for a solution. And that's really what it's going to come down to.
Well, we are where we're at. So, I mean.
My goal, I, you know, I'll leave it at this, is to produce some level of progress on the project. And I don't know how to go about that just yet. I'm evaluating all the options. And some of that may be, as I mentioned today. And I'm not saying that's the direction we're going, but it is, we need to look at all of our, our options to, to make progress.
All right. So we're not going to solve it today, but I would expect that you guys will come to us post haste with options, even the ones that we don't want to hear. I still want to hear them, right? So if, if, if you, if you only come to us with bonds, that's not going to be good enough. So you're going to have to come up with multiple options and a timeline that some of those options will take us out to, because if it's another year, we're going to have problems, right? I mean, we've, we can't just leave Jackson Creek to what the developer is going to do, which is the, the three and a half, four lanes at the north end. And then we have this narrowing to two lanes, bottlenecking them back up to four. And then Higbee is going to be expanded to four. It's just going to be very strange. So we're going to, we're going to need you to come back quickly with, with multiple options, what the costs are, what the timelines are. Certainly if bonds are one of those options, you should have some numbers to be able to provide us. And also what that does to us, you know, infrastructure wise.
Yep. I appreciate that. And my goal is to get drawings done this year for sure. So we know what, what the design side of it is going to look like. And then get that grant money handled and expended and then figure out what we're going in the future. And I'll lay out some options for.
I have one final question though. If you had nine million dollars right now, when do we start digging? No, seriously.
It's not that, that easy, man.
No, he's got, he says we're almost at 90%, which means he goes to bid. So if you had nine million dollars right now, when would we expect to see ground broken on the expansion of Jackson Creek? From Higbee to the.
Say, uh, the first quarter of 2025, realistically, by the time we get bid out, we make sure that we follow all the protocols of the grant, making sure that we close that out and, and get the proper environmental assessment completed, which they're nearing the end. But I feel first quarter of 2025, we could be breaking ground.
Good.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, we, actually nine million, it's not a big stretch. We can have by Q1 2025, two million being ARPA funds. And then we have three CDs right now, which the maturity day will be one end of July, one end of October, one end of January, each of them are 2.6. So we're going to have in CDs about maturing by end of January, about seven million. So seven plus two, nine million if.
But that's our reserves.
It's part of the reserves. Yes. Also, we reached out to our financial advisor for perhaps looking into COP bonds. And we did receive an option.
Well, I, that, the bond is the last thing I want to hear as an option. So we already bonded the town to death.
But we got, we've got, we've got other options.
Well, that's what I want to hear.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up. And Jeremiah is, you can, no, you don't, you don't have to hang up. I'm just going to say, you know, here's a guy that comes in the middle of all this mess.
And I, I'm not blaming it.
And he's a, he's done, he's done a great job trying to weave his way through all this stuff. But so, I mean, really, you, you know, when, when it comes to money, there's like, there's what? There's grants, there's property taxes that could be increased or special assessments. There's impact fees, there's sales tax increases for, for that, and there's bond money. I mean, that unless somebody's going to donate money, that's really the only place that this.
I mean, that unless somebody's gonna donate money, that's really the only place that these things can come from, and maybe it's some kind of combination of all these things.
Really hasn't been talked about in the budget. I know, I don't get me wrong, Jackson Creek needs to be done. But we're also, you know, the other major bill that has to be discussed and that needs to be put into the budget is the water. Whether you go with the Northern Doors system or the each system.
That comes out of the water fund.
Yeah, that's a different, that's that's.
But it's.
It's, I agree with you, it should be there front and center.
Uh, but it's all gonna come out of the water.
Yeah, that's what the water fund's there for. Right, Tom? Well, that's what I meant, right? But I agree with you, it should be on on the, it should be indicated as a, um. Project. We don't need a roof on town hall.
Oh. We can't afford the roof, so let's get.
Okay, is there anything else, any other questions from Ken? Good point. I I was gonna bring that up too, but I sort of spaced it cuz I was wondering why the water thing wasn't on there.
Yeah, I. Oh, I mean, that I wanted to bring up, Jeremiah, thank you for everything, greatly appreciated. Um, then we don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
But but.
He's getting used to it.
But that turn in the barrel is coming, so that was just, that was just a sample of it, so. Um. The other thing I, I I mean, it's, yeah, I wanna talk about the water cuz I think that that's a major thing that needs to be discussed in the in the budget. Something else that I want to bring up that I mean, I'm not sure if it's broken down in something that I'm missing, but do we have? Do we have funding, and if we do, how much is allocated to send? Personnel to training? For professional development courses?
Yes, we do. Each department head provides, uh, in the in the budget. Training and, um, opportunities for their team members, so we do have an allocated account just for training meetings, yes.
How much is that?
Well, it depends, it's.
This is just a very, very first high level.
It depends on the department and how big each department is. If you want a breakdown, we can quantify, I mean, consolidate and send you by fund.
I would like to know. I don't know if anybody else would, but.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm fine with when we get there, making sure that everybody's professional development is budgeted, that. The councils and you know what, cuz there's stuff allocated to SERSA. Part of that professional development goes to SERSA for everybody cuz they come in and give classes and, uh, CML and other professional organizations that, uh, the clerks go through and all the other positions as well. So that's all, that's all captured, right? And we can.
Yes.
We can break that down into its own spreadsheet that says professional development and show council staff and broken down by department. Is that what you're looking for? Any other things that you would like to see or have any questions for staff on the budget? Alright, no, we will.
Thank you, Mona.
Thank you, Mona.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to for all those who took.
I think one staff member does have one question for you guys.
Oh.
I I believe, I hope I'm reading him correctly.
Um, and again, I'm not sure if this is the the proper place for it, but you need to be aware of some things. The, um. One of the projects we've been looking at trying to do ever since I became director, and that is the public works facility. Um. So we've always had a plan that's been at a thirty percent level for probably five, five, six years now. And we had, um, a consultant look at. What would it take from a finance standpoint to get a structure like that built? And when we talked to the consultant, he said that because it's a public works facility. You could actually have that facility, uh, built and the finance would come from the value of the facility. Almost like if you took out a construction loan to build a house, very similar. Um, so we got some preliminary data that shows if we were to build this facility based on what we know now about cost. That the prices range from an annual payment of about. One point two million down to nine hundred and thirty thousand, depending on how many years and when you actually apply for that funding. And it wouldn't require any collateral of other infrastructure. It would basically, the collateral would be in the building once it's built. Um, so that's a just a preliminary step that we took just to know if the numbers we're thinking about are are workable or not. We don't have it in the budget this year. We have some money set aside to do some fencing and some, um. Um, an outdoor, um, heavy equipment storage. Cuz if you've been to our facility down at the end of Jefferson, it is, it is about as packed as you could, you could physically make it. And by creating that first step of creating an outdoor storage with just a roof and the columns. And run electric for the oil heaters in the winter, that could give us room to move eight to ten pieces of heavy equipment out there. And and again, as a temporary fix. Um, so we're budgeted to try to do that between this year and next year. But what's holding me back from from going forward with that is whether or not would that money be better spent trying to get our design from thirty percent to ninety percent? In which case, we can at least have something to get, send it out for a bid and get real numbers, then we know what that project costs.
What what would you do at the old facility if you moved, if you were moved down there?
Um, I, there's some value to it. I think I know in the past, there's certain key members of staff that would like to keep it. Only because for more of a parks summer type facility, because they have so many small engine type equipment. And it's easier to operate out of that facility for work they do in in town with the parks than it is to put it all the way down at Cintas and Mitchell. But if we needed to sell that to raise some revenue, I'm sure we would, we would be on board with that just to try to get the new facility built.
Is there any underground, uh, hazardous storage?
That's that's the million dollar question. We would have to do a soil sample to find out if it's some kind of a brownfield site or not. Uh, I don't know with the history prior to the year two thousand when I started, um. I don't believe there's any underground fuel tanks or nothing. It just may be years of of what they did back in the seventies and in that timeframe, so we wouldn't know until you took a sample.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll, we'll be in touch with you about that. Um, we're gonna take five minutes. Uh, we'll start the meeting five minutes late, so people can take a quick break. I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, July fifteenth. Please rise for the pledge.
For which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Sir Erickson, will you take role, please?
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Omenella.
Here.
Air Pro Tempe.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Number Fiorito.
Here.
Air.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay, um. Do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest? Ms. Ulmer. Is she able to unmute?
Thank you. I have received no disclosures of a conflict of interest, so there's nothing for you to act upon tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, we have an agenda and a consent agenda, um, before. Uh, before we, uh, make any motions for that, um. Item four D. Um. You are not prepared to speak to that tonight, right? Because the contract is not accurate in its description of the board. Yeah, okay.
Now.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, the resolution, uh, forty four that's currently on the consent, that is to for Mountain View Electric to, uh, purchase and install a new transformer for one of our new wells. But when it came to us, uh, I didn't, I didn't review that first sentence and sent it in. And then realized that it says statutory town and not home rule municipality. So I've contacted a MVA to resend, to correct and resend that that typo. The rest of the description in there is just a legal description of the well twelve site, and the rest of that, um, grant of right of way. Is, uh, identical legal language as well eleven that you approved. I wanna say maybe a month ago, month and a half ago, there'll be one more coming probably in early August for the last well. But I'll make sure that one says home rule municipality, so my hope is that you'll review and approve that. But contention upon. The language on the first page being changed, and then I, that's the one I'll bring you to sign. But I I what I'm trying to do is get it approved for the funding, since it is budgeted, so that they can look at ordering the transformer. There is a lead time associated with that, that we're hoping is not gonna impact the budget. It's.
Okay, and then there was one other point.
Actually, there were two other places where statutory town was stated. They should do a global search and replace on that document.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the the only other point on that one is there's no, um. Not to exceed. So.
Okay.
The language that they used in, um. They they basically stated that, uh, if costs go up. Based on, um, MB MBEA's procurement of of materials or scheduling.
Mm hmm.
That raises our costs, which means you'd be coming back to us. And I think we've already established that we're not inclined to pass. Any any budgetary items without there being a not to exceed in the contract. So I I think this should be pulled out. I know you wanna get it done. I'd like to get it done too, but the fact that they've, the language is messed up and there's, there's, um, the potential for cost overruns on this. Based on things out of our control.
Alright, I will, uh, talk to them tomorrow morning and see if we can make it. With a not to exceed. I mean, I I haven't seen one from MVA like that, but that doesn't mean they can't do it, so.
Okay, so, um, then we will continue this to the next meeting. Um, I'll, I will make a motion to remove, well, I don't know if they're doing this right. We're gonna remove forty four twenty twenty four from the consent agenda. And then, um, we'll make a separate motion under the resolutions, I guess. Later to continue it. What's the next meeting, August? I just wanted to get a date.
It's second or something like that.
August fifth.
Yeah.
Alright, when we get to that, we'll need a motion to continue that. So, uh, I've I've made a modification to the consent agenda and and agenda. In general.
Second.
There's a. What do you, what do you, uh, seconding? The motion is to, um.
Remove, remove thirty three D.
Right, and and down to.
Down to eight and then approve consent agenda with forty four D removed.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
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 Aye.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Omenella.
Yes.
Hey, and then looking for a motion to. Approve the agenda as modified.
I'm moved to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Abbott.
Yes.
Earl LeCain.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, those motions pass seven to zero. Um, next up, both of office Sergeant Joshua Marks. Chief Riedel.
Josh is the only person I've promoted twice since I've been here, so congratulations. There we go. Keep it to his way. Yeah, he's taking my job and I'm going home. Alright. But raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and bear. True faith and allegiance. To the Constitution and laws. Of the United States of America. And the state of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
And to the ordinance of the town of Monument.
To the ordinances of the town of Monument.
And that I will defend and protect the lives.
And that I will defend and protect the lives.
Safety and property.
Safety and property.
Of the people of Monument.
People of Monument.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge. The duties of office of sergeant. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Come pin him.
Just on the shirt, not the skin. Just a little trick, leave it like that. Awesome. Can you get a photo lens?
Anytime. Just say a little bit about yourself, would you?
Uh, well, thank you, chief. Thank you, everyone. Uh, this is an honor. I think my wife, we're about to hit twenty two years of marriage this year. My son Brayden. Looking forward to being a good team leader. My new team, they can, really good team, coming from a good team leader as well, so looking forward to that very much.
Thanks, Josh.
Uh, next up, we have a couple of presentations, um, life saving award for officers Bari Entos and Thompson.
You sound like deja vu with Thompson, he just got one.
Um. Did I say that last name right?
You did.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, who achieved? To present the award, I have who used to be Sergeant DiRienzo, who had her last day with us today. All good, it's all good, we can talk about it later. Is on her own accord, so, uh, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
You guys wanna come up here, please? So back on May nineteenth of this year, uh, both Officer Bari Entos and Officer Thompson were dispatched to the area of Baptist over the I twenty five. There was a female on the bridge having a crisis. Uh, both officers arrived on scene, they saw the situation, assessed the situation, and without haste was able to assist this female. Detain her and get her the help that she needed. Detain her and get her the help that she needed. Um, she is still here today because of their quick action and their ability to assess the situation and um help somebody that. Really needed it. And I'm downplaying it a lot. Wash the body cam. It was a little. I'm just very proud of them. They did a very good job. So to present a life-saving award, and you guys will get your awards later, um but the. Copy. There you go. We could give them a round of applause for a job well.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, chief.
This isn't going to be a monthly thing, just so. Right.
Um. All right. Uh, next up is a presentation on asset forfeiture. Chief Reagan.
So the council had asked for a presentation on asset forfeiture, I believe, two months ago, and we set the date for today. Commander John Lepton is going to run you through a quick PowerPoint of uh our process and what we're doing. And then we can answer any questions you have after that.
Good evening. I am Commander John Lepton with the Monument Police Department. The uh this treatment process for unclaimed and forfeit forfeiture property is what I'm going to quickly hit on, just kind of the highlights of where we were going with it. You know, the next slide for me. So the town occasionally comes across items. That people will not come and claim forfeit, lost wallets, uh. Lost twenty-dollar bills. One of the best examples I like to give for you all to see is. Let's say a box store comes, people come and steal stuff from the box store, put a fill it with the tools. And items, take it out into the shopping center and then get caught on the way out, right? The box store will not take the items back that have been stolen from their inventory. It's a loss. There are evidence in the procedure for us to take back. And then when the case is finally dismissed. They go, okay, what do you want to do with it? They're like, not our problem. Hence how we get a lot of items and property and that kind of thing. So. I'm just giving you an example of some of those kinds of items that come up as forfeiture. Now. We also have the normal kinds of items that come up as a forfeiture, cases where property was illegally obtained or seized from a business or property. Your drug dealer goes down the road. He's got a bunch of methamphetamine. He's got baggies. He's got cash and. He gets taken with all of those things. We tell him, great, well, this money, this four thousand dollars you have in five and tens and twenties. It's all sitting here for you to prove to the government that you can have it back. You may have it back whenever you want, but a court of law decides. What they do with that property when it's taken. We do not have final say over any of it. We put it in an inventory and say, it's part of the case. Here's the property. If they want to come and claim this property uh correctly, they are more than welcome to it. It's held until that case is adjudicated through the court system. Most of the time, those people do not come back for their funds. So surprisingly, then we still have to account for it and do something with it, all right? Found property items which are given to the P D. Sometimes people will find a wallet. With money in it. People never come and claim it. They have ninety days. We send registered letters to where the people are, last known address, try and get a hold of them. Lots of them go, okay, I know. And then they just never come and claim it. So after ninety days, it becomes. State property of what do we end up doing with it as a town, those kinds of things. Items kept for that safekeeping. Is what we're talking about and forfeited defendant when the courts close a case. So. The court can also tell them they're not getting their property back by order of the judge, or it may be a part of their plea agreement that they've. Forfeited the rights to that property over a judge, and the judge will make that final determination. Go to that next side. So when it comes to things that we can't return, M P D must decide what to do with it, and that is dictated by Colorado Revise Statute. These statutes in Friday, the sixteen thirteen three eleven and sixteen thirteen seven oh two, both talk about seized personal property and forfeited property. What do we have to do to be able to use it? Do whatever we're going to do with it. And I've kind of summarized what that law says and what we have to do. Items that are held in good condition and potentially have a monetary value by town monument procedures. We give to sure success group, the auction house. They go get auction at whatever that is, and then when they're done auctioning off those items, they cut the check back to the town of Monument. The items go into our auction proceeds account with finance. Then the items that the chief could use, let's say we get um. Lockcutters for doors or those kinds of things. Somebody has a pair of that, and we have a legitimate, purposeful use. We would send a memo to the chief and say, we would. This is property. It's been deemed turned in. Rather than take it to auction, we have a vested use for it within the P D. Or within Public Works, and we get him to sign off on those items as being used strictly for police items or for police use. Or for parks use, something like that. Anything that doesn't have monetary value, we turn around and destroy. And this is uh at the bottom is just our disposition of property, showing that this isn't something we make up. It is in our policy manual for disposition of property of what we go in. And do with it. Go to the next slide for me. All right. So literally, when we're talking about seized items, we're talking illegal activities, taken in an evidence of a crime. Held for safekeeping when a subject is booked in or turned in to the jail, and then they never come back and get their property. And a plethora of all those things over time. Uh, if the money is counterfeit, we can't return counterfeit money. That gets turned into the secret service, or they order us to destroy. Anything that would be counterfeit money. And. This money is all deposited into a specifically marked account. Our account at the moment, since two thousand and thirteen. Has twelve thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents. So it's not a moneymaker, right? It's just where we've had it. And it's going to give what's required for us to have to do with that. Unclaimed money, like it says in eight oh six nine point one, money found no longer required as evidence, remains unclaimed for one year. Presumed to be abandoned, and then the funds are deposited into our asset forfeiture account for future department use. With the approval of the chief of police in coordination with state statute sixteen thirteen seven oh two. For that, next slide for me. And what that says is that the chief has to have a meeting with the town of finance department. And with a representative of the fourth judicial district district attorney's office, and together. They would have to have a meeting on how they are going to spend those funds that are sitting in that account. So. If we ever have enough money in that account where we're actually going to go out and get something on the town from the town of Monument, that's the state statute we would have to do. To be able to spend that money. Until then, it sits in our account. Under that account until the chief de- deems it high enough to go get something that they want to go, and they'd have to come. Uh, with that group of people and approve that spending. So. The other part of where we get are uh. Not only here, but also we are in agreements where you saw some of those concerns with uh vice and narcotics. So we have a. Member who's on the task force. He works with the V N I unit out of Colorado Springs. And sometimes on the cases that we are involved with, we are allowed to um request funds from Colorado Springs, who's doing the exact same thing with partnership with El Paso County. They turn around and then we ask for grants, chief asks for grants on ballistic shields, for rifle ballistic shields that would be very helpful. And they grant us the finances for those documents on occasion. We in the town of Monument haven't had enough money for us to turn around and go and spend that on anything. After more than twelve years, twenty, twelve thousand dollars, we're getting there and we have a good process for it. And it's sitting in an account with about fifty different cases that were either found property, adjudicated property, or disposed property from the uh county court. That turned around and said, that's what we end up doing with it, and then we do not do anything with it, except that it sits in our account, which I. Have a copy of for the. The council, if they wanted to see where achievement receiptment sheet is for financial reports. And it's up and online in the budget report at the end of the fiscal year to show how much money we have gained, and it sits there from year to year to year. Well, that's it pretty much of what we end up doing with it. If you have any questions or concerns for me.
Yeah, could you seize a mastic machine or a bucket lift? Bucket lift truck? Because that would help our budget.
General.
We're about nine million dollars from Jackson.
If you could find a Jackson Creek Parkway not being used or used illegally.
Nine million dollars.
Even a cop plant. If you can find us a cop plant.
I I most of those things we can seize. We don't go out looking for certain things. I just want that to be known. Yes, we can. No, we will not.
Okay, there's not a shopping, like a Costco warehouse of seized items?
I'm not saying that doesn't exist. I just don't have access to it.
Right, okay. Any other, any questions or smart aleck?
It was thorough. Thank you so much for letting us.
That that was enlightening.
Yeah, thank you. And I think just from the feel I got about, you know, the question about doing it is that. We're not just going around and taking people's things. You know, there's very specific rules we have to follow. There's very specific crimes you actually have to commit for us to be able to start. Um, taking stuff from you. So it's not um running rampant in Monument. I have not signed off on any expenditures from that account. Since I've been here, we have signed over um certain items like, you know, bolt cutters and stuff like that, but that's about it.
No Rico cases?
Well, it's not that we don't have Rico cases because our detective on the V N I group, they're working Rico cases all the time. But now it's a task force, right? So you get a percentage of it. And if you think about it, he's been there for less than two years. This process is going to take longer than two years. So nothing he's seized is probably gone out the door yet. So, but. The benefit of having him on there is when we do have money that we need, when I ask for that twenty thousand dollars for rifle rated shields. That wasn't money that he collected. He just happens to be on the group so we can ask for it. Make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is um. Well, we have public hearing items, uh an ordinance that I believe is going to be continued. So I will, I will let uh Ms. Omar tell us how we're going about. Doing that since it's a public hearing item.
Are you referring to ordinance number eleven twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, but it's not actually in the packet. Do you want us just to continue that to a new date?
Yes, please. If you could table that till the second meeting in August.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to. Yes, because it's not ready. Yes, and we can just talk about that in the executive session as to the reasons why.
So uh I make a motion to table ordinance ordinance continue or table um.
I think we're going by continue under Bob's rules.
Continue, okay. I make a motion to continue ordinance number eleven twenty twenty-four and ordinance approving the twenty twenty-four Comcast franchise agreement with the town of Monument. To the nineteen of August twenty twenty-four.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fierito?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
Senator Temple?
Yes.
Councilmember Omenella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we have an ordinance. Related to the um upcoming coordinated election. Also, to be continued. Uh, Ms. Hogan, would you like to? Speak to that?
Yes, happy to. So we do recommend continuing this until August fifth. Due to an error in the draft, we incorrectly identified the district that council member Romanella lives in. It's misidentified in this version as a district one seat instead of a district two seat. Uh, so we need to clean that up. And we also are going to require, recommend that you require nomination petitions. That include the district seat and the length of the term in the petition for two years or four years. So we'll bring this back to you on August fifth.
Um, so you're saying that. I was under the impression that the person who received the most votes would get the four-year term. And the the runner-up would get the two-year term. Are you suggesting now that people? Would have a petition specific to the amount of years that they're running for?
You would, that the candidate would say how long their term would be.
Would if everybody, would if everybody wants a four-year term and there's only one? Four-year term to be had.
And we'd have to appoint someone.
And nobody runs for a two-year term.
Or then it could default to the system that you referenced. Where the person with the most votes gets a four-year term and the runner-up gets a second uh two-year term.
Could we just do it that way anyway?
Yes, mm-hmm. You want to keep it that way?
I I was just so that there's, there'd be, yeah, it's just for clarity purposes, uh. Everybody would go in with the same understanding that if they don't win outright the most votes, the the next person gets the two-year term.
Okay. We will keep it that way then.
So we've done it in the past.
Yeah, that's how we've done it in the past. That's how we did it in the last election.
Right.
Right. Okay, so then I will look for a motion to continue that to August fifth. Correct.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to continue ordinance number fifteen twenty dash or fifteen dash twenty twenty-four to the August fifth meeting.
Second.
Good motion, a second. Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
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 Okay, next up, resolution um twenty-five twenty twenty-four, also to be continued. Mr. Ungaliter?
Don't they can add or report is that the uh. As of the posting of this agenda, we had not had the revised uh plat. We now have them in our, we had now have it in our hands, and it'll be ready for presentation at the next uh town council meeting.
So August fifth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'm looking.
Can I, in, if I'm not mistaken, this should be a very brief thing. We just had to show correcting two items and moving it through, right?
Uh, that's what you identified. I identified quite a bit more and uh have revised the plat to so that it shows legal meets and bounds of everything we're looking for. Um, and it's been corrected, and it'll be coming back to in August.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll look for a motion to continue with this resolution to August fifth.
I move to continue resolution twenty-five twenty twenty-four, resolution approving final plat for Monument Lake Beach Front filing number one to. August fifth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero. The next one up to be continued is resolution forty twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are continuing this one because we are still uh gathering some uh pertinent information uh on. Um, town manager pay. I am going to be sending off some completed spreadsheet data over to our. Uh, town attorney for distribution to the rest of the council. So at the August fifth meeting, we can discuss. The the data collected on um municipal. Town city manager act, you know, what they get paid anyway, to determine what we would pay our acting, co-acting town managers. And it's a lot of data, but it's it's nicely sorted at this point.
Fifteen tabs.
This is August.
It's fifty tabs.
Yes.
I, every minute of power.
August fifth?
August fifth. Hit it.
I move to continue resolution forty dash twenty twenty-four, resolution authorizing a pay. For co-acting town managers move uh continuing to August fifth.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Omenella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fierito?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
And that motion passes seven to zero. And last but not least, to be continued. resolution 442024. That is the resolution for the town council to approve the purchase and installation of a new three-phase transformer, well, number 12. And you, um, Mr. Tharnish, do you think you can have that by the 5th? So we will make it for the 5th. Okay. And if everything is all, all good and well, you can put it back into the consent agenda.
Oh, I was gonna ask, uh, do, do we want to spread the, spread the love or do we want to stack it? Okay, all right, okay.
Anybody would like to make a motion, that would be great.
All right, I'll make a motion that we continue resolution number 44-2024 to, uh, August the 5th.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Piorito.
Aye.
Mary La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Simple.
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next up, we have discussion items. Uh, first one up is Home Rule Charter Development, Councilmember Romanello.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I appreciate also, uh, speaking individually to a couple of my fellow council members about this and, um, Councilwoman Chronic this morning about, uh, some questions, I guess, that have come up with this. Um, I thought that I was relatively clear on what I was trying to do, but, um, I, I don't think that I was. So this isn't so much about having, uh, and let me just start with this. This isn't so much about having a specific person, uh, report back to the council for a specific reason, like a clerk or a finance director or, or another director. What this is about is checks and balances and accountability, which i- is lacking, in my opinion, and as though I can't speak more about the pending sursta investigation that we have going on, so it would be highly inappropriate. Yeah, I also don't want to kick this down, uh, to August because it seems these next two agendas have become very uh, compressed. And, um, to say the least, uh, but I think talking maybe briefly about it after our investigation's done may have, uh, some appropriateness. Um, i- i- this is very simply about the fact that the Home Rule Charter has created a town manager who is an unelected person running the town at a super majority vote that's five to two. Um, and leaving, of course, the attorney, which should always be accountable to the board and nobody else being accountable to the board. Um, and because of the circumstances of our attorney being a contract attorney and not a staff attorney working at town hall and having a pulse or heartbeat on the condition and, uh, m- mental health of the staff as a whole, if you will, this poses great accountability problems that, um, I won't dig deeper into at this point, but it should be pretty obvious to anybody. Our government was founded with a legislative, an executive and a judicial branch, and I'm not relating that to here like a town should like, but they did that on purpose, okay? And I think that when, and from what I understand from people that have been i- in government here in Colorado for a while, they say our Colorado constitution originally was been written pretty well. And I think that when they did statutory town law, those checks and balances were there so those people would be accountable to the board. And here is the problem that we're facing and are dealing with is that if there is toxicity in staff and it, and no one's, and everyone's afraid to say anything because you have a, a, they're afraid of getting fired or retaliation from a town manager and an attorney isn't here and present and there's no employee manual that gives uh, staff direction to talk to the attorney. So an attorney can talk to us. It, this can really become problematic. So I'm not trying to put, uh, a clerk or, or, listen, I was here. Okay, I was, I was here when an obstructionist board, I hate to call it that, but it was, had a lot of people here under threat. And I'm not trying to do that again, all right? Or, or have somebody who's scared for their job every time that, that the board flips and votes. What I'm trying to do is have a checks and balance system so that if there is a problem in staff, there is, and I think Mayor Pro Tem's, uh, Mo- Mo- Mayor Pro Tem King's term conduit, uh, to let us know and rectify that as absolutely quickly as possible. That's what I'm trying to achieve here. So if somebody else has a better idea rather than having another director or employee accountable, uh, directly to us, I'd love to hear it. And whether it's HR, uh, and of course, if we had an actual HR manager, uh, that would be the case. Uh, or if there was a case that, that individual could not just get fired at will by a board, uh, there would have to be cause, uh, or having, uh, maybe even, uh, a, a sursa overview or approval. I'm just throwing out ideas here, okay? The problem is, though, the way it is right now is very broken and problematic, period. And they, and if you can't see that, I would disagree with you very heartily. Uh, so that's where I'm coming from. Uh, any feedback or how to correct this, uh, would be great with me. Um, because again, i- if you drill down on each one of these concerns, and I've done it, um, there's pros and cons to having somebody accountable to us, uh, versus, you know, the purview of a town manager. There is, you know, pros and cons, and, and, and Mr. Cole and his firm is awesome. Uh, but just having, you know, uh, direction to employees that, you know, you know, call Bob anytime, uh, gives a, uh, a blank check policy to a contract attorney that isn't a faithful resources of, uh, citizens' money, and that's not wise. So there, i- i- but if it was a staff attorney, it wouldn't be that way. I'm not suggesting getting rid of them and having a staff attorney. There's prob- pros and cons with all this. So any dialogue or feedback or even from, uh, our acting town managers, I don't know how many different towns you've worked for and seen checks and balances, your experience in the industry, Madeline, um, I, I take feedback from any of us. That's what I'm trying to accomplish. I'm not trying to say the city clerk particularly needs to be reporting to us. I was trying to get back accountability, that someone could come to us without threat of termination. If someone is causing a very hostile environment and they don't want to have retaliation, that is the bottom line, if I've made myself clear.
You've made yourself clear and I appreciate that you want to solve this problem and I would like to solve this problem as well. Unfortunately for me at the moment, because of other, because of cer- situation that we're in at the moment, there's things that I would like to bring up, but I don't feel like I can.
Correct.
And, um,
Between taking the story a fifth.
Well.
Okay, but go that, sorry.
Yeah, and, 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 and I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is, but I have. It's just, it's tough to dance around all this stuff.
That's, um.
I think that I, you know, we, you and I talked and we talked about, you know, having some type of a conduit. I will tell you that, um, there are problems that have been going on for many years and, um, under, before Home Rule. Um, and it's, and it's, and it's complicated and, and there's ways to circumvent almost everything. And, um, we, we have to, we have to, I've got some ideas, but I, I can't.
Can I make a suggestion?
I can't really go there, right?
So, um, I don't know when the last time, uh, the employee manual was formally presented to the council for purposes of adoption, but it's fairly common, um, activity that gets, that's done by municipalities across the state. I know that there is an, uh, active personnel manual or employee, employee manual that's being updated. Uh, I've seen a copy of it. Um, it needs to be distributed to the council for review. Anyway, I think this would be, uh, uh, an opportunity to develop those conduits that we're concerned about. Um, to make sure that there is always a path uh, for employees that are staff or report to the council a certain direction to deal with problems that we have been experiencing right now. Um, and since Allison is, um, uh, hard, well, Allison specifically has been working, uh, with HR to develop that employee manual. Uh, and I, I'm guessing there's other staff members that have also been contributing to it. But at some point, we need to get it before the council to be reviewed. Um, I don't want to say work session because I know someone's going to throw something at me, but, um, I would like to have some free dialogue where we've got an opportunity to discuss what's in the employee manual. So I think it needs to be sent to the entire council for their review on their own time. They can, um, I'm sure there'll be questions or suggestions. I'm sure a lot of the things in the employee manual come out of statute that comes from up above, whether it be state or federal. So there's things that we can't change and my expectation is, is that Allison and Bob have are the ones responsible for making sure we're following the, the laws that are related to, uh, employment, but, um, I'm sure there's some things that we can contribute. Um, and at the very least, uh, it, we are the ones that have to adopt it on behalf of the, of the, the town.
And we all, we all come here with the same goal, which is to make the town run more efficient, uh, and be on the same team and, and have the opportunity for, for town staff to, you know.
Feel safe?
Feel safe. Exactly right.
Okay.
And, and we, you know, we're, it's not an us versus them and it should never be that way. It, there needs to be a flow back and forth and it, it has to work out for boards like us or boards that could be, um, fighting each other. Um, there, and it, and it's a difficult process and it will probably take a little bit of time to figure all that stuff out, but, um, yeah, we're, we're on the same page as far as we, we want the same things.
I just wanted to get it, if it, it's like really what we're doing here, you know, is, um, the way I view this, and I take it really seriously because, you know, we're looking at a constitu- I'll call the charter a constitution that was written. We're looking at amending it to make it better, uh, and, and, and function better, not. This is not about solving a problem now or making something right now. This is about putting things in place that when this board's gone, when, when staff, when certain staff members here have retired and moved on, that there is something in place that, that, that is functional for the future. And I take that very seriously. Uh, and I think everybody should. So I'm not just reacting. I, I, I brought this up immediately, immediately after this was written, long before we were dealing with any quote current situation, seeing that this could be an issue and it has become that. And, uh, I just, if it needs to be on a ballot in some way, then I want it on a ballot. Again, not necessarily, you know, to, to put Tina in some hot seat situation. It was not about that. You understand that? Okay, you understand what I'm communicating?
I, I just personally don't think that the charter has created the problem.
The way, I'm not blaming, I'm, I'm just saying that, that the circumstances that we're in, as I just described, I, i- is created a situation and that has also to do, like I said, and, and having a contract attorney that isn't here and isn't on staff wasn't in the charter. That wasn't, but it's, but it is an additional component to what's happening. And, and I just think something needs to be done to handle it. I do, oh, good.
So, well, what?
I have a question.
I'm hearing a bunch of things, or I want to know what we're, what we are going to accomplish tonight. Are we moving this con- conversation?
You know, I want to ask Allison first before you do that. I hear where you're going. Um, Allison, uh, back in statutory days and one of the, the hiccups that we had that had the town, you know, pretty handcuffed for a while was there, whenever a new board came on, there was almost, and this is the way it was described to me by our town attorney at that time or shortly thereafter, that there was a hand wave, so to speak, approving those four positions at that time that reported to the board. They weren't new hires. They'd been around for a while, but is that part of the charter now or is that something that's gone since there's a charter? Because just that one hand wave was blocked. I- i- it just wouldn't even happen. And that's a question I have.
I'll have to check your charter to see, but I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. So the positions that are appointed by council, when a new council would come on, do you have to reappoint those positions?
We used to, under, under, under statutory law, we did. I'm asking if we still have to, because that.
When the board changed, it wasn't when the board changed, it was when the term of the person's contract was up. So it had nothing to do with the board. It was.
There was, there was a term, it was at the term.
At the term of the person who was. Oh, all right.
Well, I could let you know what I know if you're interested in.
Yeah, I would like any feedback from staff at all.
Okay, so bef- before we became Home Rule, we were a statutory town. After each election, the board at the time had 30 days to make appointments. They had the authority to appoint and actually were required to appoint a clerk, a treasurer and a town attorney. They could, it was a, uh, choose to appoint a town manager. The reasoning, that law has been on the books for like over a hundred years and Allison can correct me if I'm wrong. But that law was developed when it was members of the board itself that served those roles. That's why they did. We just had an election and now guess what? You're the new clerk. You're the new treasurer. You guys are good, you're the one that's going to take the minutes and you're the one that's going to hold the money. So that's why that's on there. That's, that's statutory law. Our charter, the way that it was written, basically removed the clerk and the treasurer from the necessity of being reappointed every time they had an election and they became, they always were just employees of the town anyway, but they, the formality of this, this blessing, we call an appointment, was removed. I was a statutory clerk for over seven years with this board and never once was I reviewed by the council or directed by the council or mentored by the council or, nor did you guys know what I was doing at all. Um, I wasn't like supervised. This, the statute doesn't even define what the appointment means. It's literally just a word. It doesn't mean hired or selected or recruited or trained. Um, it's.
I just don't want anyone to use that quote to, to, to bring the town to a screeching halt again. That's all I'm saying. Okay.
Can I, can I add some? So I think the idea of checks and balances is what you're talking about here. At the end of the day, right? Um, so I do come from a city that had checks and balances and was clearly defined. You know, if you had a problem with this person, you went to this person. If you had a problem with that person, very clearly defined, um, how you would go about it. We did have staff attorneys, like we had people that worked for this, for the city, which was incredibly helpful. Um, but, you know, we had finance directors and a treasurer. So if you can imagine the push-pull that we had every time we were going to do budget, the good thing was treasurer knew exactly what the county, the council wanted to do. Whereas we have to sit here and, and ask you, whereas if someone reported to you, you'd have that. It's just when they hold the purse strings and they report to the council and we have a finance director, it makes it really tough on the town manager. Because the town manager doesn't actually have the money. They have to go through someone appointed by the council. With all that being said, I like the idea of the review of the employee manual. I don't think we should be making updates once a year. I think it should be a le- living, breathing document that's changed when it needs to be changed. I think we get into trouble when, you know, it's like, okay, summer's coming, update the manual. Well, we probably should have done it nine, 10 months ago. The other thing is it's a lot to take in all at the same time. When you're given an entire manual every year to go through. Now, if we made incremental changes and changes when they need to be made, that would be fantastic. The last thing I'll say, and I'll shut up, is that a lot of what we put into policy is what we have to do, not what we can do. And a lot of that has to do with benefits for employees. It would be great to have input from the council. The one, uh, issue we've been talking about recently was a change to military time, where officers had 148 hours a year and just, you know, with the swipe of a pen, the next year it went down to 120. Now, I'm sure that's a statutory thing that says you have to give at least 120, but as a town, can we come together and keep giving our military people the 148 hours? That's what I think would be a huge benefit, having all of you there to say, yes, we can go above and beyond in this particular arena. Thanks.
Well, as far as, as far as, I mean, we, we, we kind of need some type of advocacy for the, for the town staff.
Well, all right, so before we completely go off topic, the, 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 this is about Home Rule Charter Development. I want, I, I don't want to discount what you have to say, but I want to make sure we're at the appropriate time for it. What is it that you wanted to do with this? Is there something more that we need to discuss?
I, I hear your point. It is about Home Rule Charter development, but Charter, Home Rule Charter development i- in the fact of what, uh, in, in an accountability loss or checks and balances loss that I saw as a result of it, it could be. in, in an accountability loss or checks and balances loss that I saw as a result of it, it could be handled another way. Then I don't mind it being handled another way. I'm not stuck on one solution after talking to my fellow council people and, and, you know, hearing of some feedback from staff. So, um, how you want to handle that answer is up to you, but I would like to hear Jeremiah's thoughts. Uh, if that's okay.
Council is interested in the pulse of the organization.
Very much.
And no matter how well an organization, and I'm speaking from just prior experiences with different agencies like, um, Chief, uh, was speaking to, is that employees will always need to feel like they're in an environment that truly is unbiased. And in order to do that, I mean, we do have, uh, budget available to potentially look at a consultant that is unbiased, unattached to the town, um, is not managed by maybe an HR director, and to conduct employee, um, surveys and, and true surveys. And so those questions that are often asked, um, in, in my experience have many times been driven by a board or a council to, if they want to know specific things about the inner, internal workings. And then the employees understanding that that, what they communicate back is going to a, um, to a service provider that then basically takes that information and puts it into a format that doesn't identify a person. That report comes back to the council for review, as well as the executive leadership team within the agency. And there is no question about the, um, the privacy of what is shared. Now. We're already working on that. Just, okay, this is something that's being done going on, uh, two months ago, because we were looking for a solution on how the council was going to operate the performance review for the employees that report to us, which in this particular case, at the moment is just the town manager. In the future, it could be a town manager and, and staff attorney. But we needed a mechanism, and we've moved beyond just our two employees, and, and we're looking at other things. But, um, and I do appreciate that you've got the same idea that we've, well, Councilmember Chronic and I have been working on. And we're almost ready to hand it off to the acting town managers to RFP out. So we are right a step ahead of you.
All right.
That sounds great.
Well, I, I think I, I, I think everybody understands where I'm coming from, and if maybe you want to just continue this discussion till after our current investigation gets done, I'd be okay with that. And you can move on to the next topics. It's, but it's up to the rest of my fellow council members as well.
I think what I, what I hear you saying, and it's independent, again, I, I think we can keep it, um, broad enough to where if I understand you correctly, you would prefer a, at least a second senior staff, s- senior town staff member that reports to the council. And probably to, um, forestall any whimsical new council reaction, you probably want to keep it to a five-two, same with the town, same as the town manager.
That would be one solution.
So the, the idea though is, or the, the, the real, to me, the real question is which senior staff member, town staff member, um, makes sense to have report to the council. Um, it gets hired by the council, gets reviewed by the council, and everything that comes with it. It could be, and the HR director, and it could be chief of police.
HR probably would make the more sense, or something that would come from HR. It's, as long as it didn't cause a, a gridlock in staff, you know, I mean, HR and, and in, in that example, HR and the town manager would need to work well. You wouldn't want somebody in charge of HR that thumbed his nose at the town manager. They would need to kind of work in harmony. But in that case too, the town manager could come to us if there was a problem with HR. Um, H- HR would make absolutely the most sense. We really don't have, at this point, a, a, a solid HR manager, in my opinion.
It would be, it would be better, in my opinion, and I, and, and you'll find out more later, but it would be more, in my opinion, to have an independent HR person report to us, which wouldn't require, uh, a modification of the charter. It would be, it would be, you know, we have a, we have a HR person here that is, is, it reports to and maybe an independent HR company that is, that is unbiased and can be a conduit from without having the threat of any type of retaliation within the organization.
Right. And, and we can come to us directly with any information.
Right. And that's just theoretical. I mean, there's ways, obviously, to get around all this stuff.
Well, yes, and, and we see the ways to get around, you know, the, the executive, you know, and legislative and judicial, but it's, it's better than just having all the power in one area. So, y- yes, even though there is that, I, I think the way it is right now, it's, it's too, it's too myopic, and it's too swung to one side.
Are we going to have this discussion a later, later date?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to, um, the next one, which I don't know if we talked about this, to be honest. Section seven, three, and fourteen, two of the Home Rule Charter, um, Mr. Romanello. Same conversation, so A and B, we've basically discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to, um, letter C. Oh, uh, August, let's do, uh, we honestly, if there's going to be a, um, because this would require an ordinance, I believe, um, from what I, uh, discussed with, um, Bob and, and I think Allison was on the email earlier, uh, th- these would have to be done the first meeting in August, be, uh, actually sec- by the second meeting in August, because it gives time for the ordinance to be published, um, in time for it to go to, um, the ballot.
We'll have to move it, if possible, to the first and be able to move it to the second.
Well, discuss it on the, discuss it on the first one, so the ordinance can be drafted for the second one.
That's reasonable.
Okay. Mr. King.
All right, this is, this is, uh, should be a simpler conversation. Um, and this is only because, you know, we've, you know, the charter has been sitting around for a little bit of time, and I've had some people ask me about this, and I just wanted to bring it up. It is pretty restrictive relative to where a town manager can reside, and the purpose of that was to keep somebody with skin in the game, that wasn't commuting for, you know, forty or fifty miles. And whoever the, the town manager is in the future, and it's just because we're running up against an election deadline, like everything else, that we need to try to get this, you know, on the ballot if we're going to do that. Um, Tri-Lakes is, is, is pretty much Monument, the way I, I look at it. There's a, you know, people then in Woodmore that have skin in the game here. So I thought that we could expand the residency requirement to the town limits and eight oh one three two. And I say the town limits and because there is a small portion of Monument that is not in eight oh one three two. Um, it's just that area south of Baptist where there's some apartments there, which is the only residential there, but it is residential, and that would be unfair. Yeah, and it's, it's got a different zip code.
Different zip codes.
Well, I, I, I would, would agree with that, and, you know, it be prior to the charter, it was eight oh one three two.
It was, yeah, it was eight oh one three two recently, right?
Yeah.
But you're correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. So we want to revert that back, and so what we're looking for is.
Little strip.
So we want to the town limits.
I'm good with that.
So if everybody on the council is good with that, then the board direction would be to have, um, our attorneys draft an ordinance to put on the ballot the expansion of the residency requirements for the town manager to be within the town's limits or, and the, and or eight oh one three two.
Sounds good.
Right.
I'm good with it.
Is everybody on the council in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Olmer, do you understand what the direction is?
I got it. Thank you.
All right. So we'll then move on to, um, Councilmember Chronic.
Yes, I, I, um, requested from, um, Mr. Cole a clarification about how to change or modify the charter to allow for council member compensation. And he came back and said, you don't have to change the charter. All you need is an ordinance. So that, that, having made that a little bit easier.
And that's how the charter is written.
Yeah, he, he wrote it all in legalese, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to read it to you. I will if you want me to, or we can send it to you.
He can send it out.
Right. Um, but then what I did was I took the information that the mayor provided in terms of a fifty-tab, um, Excel spreadsheet, and, uh, okay.
Seventy.
But not seventy. And I extracted the, I extracted twenty-six municipalities and/or cities. Twelve were above us and population twelve were below us, and we were provided either monthly or annual what they're, what they get paid and what the effective date is, right? So I've got that in a little spreadsheet. I'm happy to share it.
Please.
Not a problem, um, so that you can see what, you know, who they are, what happened, and, and the, the, the numbers. The average, just as an FYI, was on an annual basis, thirty-seven hundred dollars, which is about three hundred dollars a month, average. So.
So the, the, the question is, we don't have a time restriction on this.
Right.
Um, the only caveat is, if I'm not, uh, since we don't address this, I think Mr. Cole said this refers back to statutory, because it's not addressed in the charter specifically.
It's addressed in the charter. It refers it to, 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 um, that's right. You're right. We, we omitted it.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
A minute.
We had such, we had so much conversations about that, and in the end, we.
Just all take note. He said I was right.
Yeah, you are right.
Um, so because it refers to statutory.
Nineteen forty, uh, fifteenth of July.
It means that, uh, for those that are running in this upcoming, if an ordinance was passed for compensation, the people running in this current election, those that win would be compensated going forward. Those that are not running in this election that remain on the council would not be compensated until the following election that they run in. Is that correct, Ms. Olmer?
That part I have not seen, so I can't speak to that right now about the timing of when it would go into effect.
I don't think we can vote for our own compensation.
Right. And that's what I was always told as well.
It seems like a good rule, but I haven't read it myself, so I don't want to say yes or no on it.
Well, it, worst cases, we'll stand right again, and you are, you're right. We can't vote for our own compensation.
I remember Mr. Rivera, another attorney, telling us that that was the case, so.
We discussed that in great length and.
So how do you want me to pass this on? Should I pass it through, have to BCC it to everybody?
Did you print it out for everybody?
No.
Oh, then I would have, um, I would have the attorneys pass it out, uh, to us blind, and then we can schedule sometime in the future, maybe not the fifth, since we have quite a few things. Um, but obviously, we need to do it before November.
Correct. Thank you.
In your research, how many other municipalities are not receiving compensation?
I'm, I'm interested. It, it is an interesting thing that you ask the question because it's CML. Um, as you know, you, you, it's not set who you're sitting with, and I just happened to sit with one of the council members from Deacona, De- Decono, and she said, oh, you're from Monument. We just did a survey about council, uh, compensation. And the people that did the survey said to us specifically, we're going to leave out two municipalities, Decono and Monument, because they bring down the average. Okay, those are the two that get, except Decono then voted to get, I think they get fifty dollars a meeting.
You, you're telling me that in the state of Colorado, we're the only ones that don't, okay?
There's more.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's under a dozen.
Okay.
But, you know, y- y- you gotta rule out the big ones like Pueblo.
Sure.
Colorado Springs and Denver all have, um, council presidents. The council president is effectively the, the mayor. They get paid a different amount than the rest of their council members. Some of their councils are big. I think Denver's was twelve plus one. And their, their budget was one point three million, just for their council for the year annually.
Dollars.
That, but they're full-time.
Okay.
Whereas Colorado Springs is not full-time.
Correct.
And I think Pueblo is not full-time, but same, same thing. Everybody else who's council manager, former government, it's way lower um, on, on the grand scheme of things. So we have to rule those, those big numbers out in order to determine if there was, uh, appetite for anything.
Okay.
Thanks.
I, I'm personally uncomfortable with saying that I would love to receive some kind of stipend or monetary amount for doing this when I was elected, knowing that I was volunteering my time to help the town.
Okay, so that's why, that's why.
He doesn't get paid.
And that, that's, I'm not going to lose sleep on it. It's not going to bother me. I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm really not in favor of that. I'd rather see the money go to the town to take care of something else. I know it's not a lot. That's just my, that's just my humble feeling. Especially with all the things that we have going on wrong right now that need to be taken care of.
Well, we can put it towards Shatton Creek Park. Never mind.
All right. Well, it's something to discuss. So you can get the numbers to the rest of the council members via the attorney, and uh, we've got plenty of time to discuss it before the November election. Any other discussion items that?
Even though it's an ordinance.
It doesn't need to go there.
No, no, before, well, if, if, if we wanted to.
All for the next.
All right, um, three times in a row.
Or on a roll.
I'm on a roll. All right.
Um, Ms. Erickson, could, could you let the record show that the mayor of Monument on seven fifteen, twenty twenty-four?
Do not put that in a minute.
Was, was correct three times back to back.
You can use them forever.
All right. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Uh, is there anybody here? I see one person. Would you like to say anything? All right, we got a hello. Anybody online? Will?
No one online there.
Of course. Mr. Lesby.
Got a comment on the compensation.
He's going to comment on the comments.
I know it. I can feel it.
You're right.
Mr. You have three minutes, Mr. Lesby. All you have to do is unmute your mic on your end.
Hey, there we go.
Oh.
Thank you. Very good discussion tonight, y'all. Um, I was just listening to the whole thing about compensation. Doesn't the compensation specifically have to be on the ballot well before November?
And we've already cleared it with our attorneys. Uh, we do not have to have it on the ballot. It could be done by ordinance.
Really? Wow.
Okay, you were on this. You were on the Home Rule Charter.
I remember, I remember thinking that it had to go through the election. Steve can correct me. You can't.
Yeah, I know.
I'll talk to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands up? Will? Okay, uh, then we will close public comments. I don't see any council authorization items. Anybody have any council comments? So, okay, seeing none, that we will move into the next item, which is executive session. Um, executive session uh, pursuant to twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, D, Colorado by statute for the conference with the town attorney Uh, pursuant to twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, D, Colorado statute for the conference with the town attorney. For the purpose of receiving legal advice on specifically questions regarding status of pending legal work.
Was that a motion?
I am making that a motion.
Second.
Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
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 I.
And we, we will adjourn. And not come back. You can change my motion around. I don't see a reason for us to come back after. Um, for those of you that are here, like one representative from each department director level or they're. A representative to hang out, you, you stay. Um, we have a representative from finance that will be staying. Steve. And uh, we will take a five-minute recess while Will is um. Organizing the uh, teams so that Allison can remain. And we're back in five. Thank you.